I've got a little bit of soft subject, but I hope you don't mind. About three years ago, one of my constituents, Robert Gallo, who lives over in South Beach, called me and said, "I'd like to have coffee with you. I've got something I want to talk to you about." And as I do with every other request like that, I said, "Sure." So we met on the way we got going, he said, "I've got an able cause I'd like to talk to you about." And I said, "Fine, what is it?" He says, "Well, I've been reading the Wall Street Journal," which always gets your ears open when you hear that, right? And he said, "They did an article about Indiana. And in Indiana, they have a program where they're installing rescue boxes inside of firehouses. And the reason that they do that is because there's been so many babies now in the dumpster area." And he said, "I'd like to be able to do that here in Missouri." And I said, "Well, that's going to cost a lot of money." And he said, "I'm not worried about the money. I'll pay for it." And I said, "Well, yeah, it's a lot of money." And he says, "Well, groups will certainly raise money to install them." And I said, "Well, as long as there's no general revenue, and us can't do that bill." Well, it took three years. Three years for you to get a simple bill like that through the legislature. But back in July, Governor Larson signed that legislation. And it's probably the first legislation you see this pro-life, pro-woman, and pro-child all acting, all in one thing. Because if you can imagine a woman's decision, first of all, to keep her baby, it's a hard decision in a lot of cases, especially if you're under the illusion of feeling like it's important. But can you imagine how horrible it is to make that decision to give up? Especially if you're giving it up to nobody, not good enough for adoption, you just give it away to a stranger. What's happened is, a lot of people can't. They want to do that, instead of knowing it themselves, they hand the baby over to somebody else who then is a very marvellous agency. So we're not going to have the ability to put in with firehouses, or hospitals, or police stations. These rescue boxes are going to be totally climate-controlled, there'll be emergency devices when the baby's put into it, when the first responders can respond to it quickly and save that baby. So I called Robert Gallo, I said, "I've got a copy of the governor's sign for you. I'd like to give it to you." And he says, "I'm so excited, because I want to pay for it first, fifteen thousand dollars." And I said, "Well, I've got a young lady in Kansas City that contacted me about trying to raise money to do one also." He said, "Let me know her name. I'll pay for that one too." Now, that's a man that not only had a college, but wants to put his trophy behind it. I like the hair drop in her mouth, because I bet that sign popped me in, you know what I just liked about him. I think we are, I think we're now going to, yeah, we're going to let everybody introduce themselves, so that I can be the best of the class. I'm representing Jim Murphy of the Ninety-fourth District, which goes everywhere from Indian Hardware to Preakes Barracks Road, out to Green Park. Been there representative for three, go on four years. My goal is always to be, work with the public to do good things. I hope that you're satisfied with what we've done. So one of the things we've found lately is, we've had a lot of problems in our neighborhoods with car break-ins and so forth. We've had other issues in South County also. So I thought it was time that we had engagement with the public. And not so much that we could, I certainly am not going to tell you what we're going to do, because we just don't know what we're on. But what I wanted to do is give you the opportunity to give a little feedback on what you think should be done also. So that's the purpose of the batting. With that, I'm going to ask this down the road.
Thank you, Jim. I'm Senator Mike Donnelly. I represent probably eighty-five percent of Oakville, from, say, Yeager Road, south along the Mississippi River, and west over to Interstate Fifty-Five. Yeah, this is actually, full credit, this whole event is Jim's idea. But from my standpoint, we all look at this through the lens of our lives, right? Whether we're homeowners, whether we're parents, whether we're victims of these crimes. One of the lenses I look at this through, really, what's great concern to me is one of my other jobs, is I'm an intelligence officer in the Navy. And I look at some of the videos that you all are posting on Facebook, some of the things that these people are doing. This isn't any crime. This isn't a drug user that's doing a crime of opportunity to break into a car to get over their money. My concern is the tactical nature of this. Seeing people walking down the streets, in the rooms, and it takes me back to my time in Iraq. When you see Marines walking in Iraq, around Afghanistan, they're not just walking, they're not just in those positions because they're just hanging out like a kid would walk through a mall. Each of those people has a job.
I don't know if Captain Snyder will do that. Be ready. Some of the bosses would say I did a great job, but I would have a good job. I'll still take that. The one that, the incident that most people are concerned about is that I got a lot of spells on it, was the Ring Door footage of the individuals that were approaching the cars in formation with a gang. Spells off as two warrants against all of the guys. They were caught. Some of the people that were linked in with them through interviews, they were caught. And then you'd think that that would reduce the number of incidents, but we had six more people taken off, completely different group. And three of them were arrested yesterday afternoon. I got the phone call last night. And three of the people were identified through those interviews. And to be quite frank, there's probably a couple of more groups, but the two that we now have custody or have charges issued against, it's like fifty-something car break-ins. So, and, and I'll go over and talk about the things later on, hours before I go, but if you have questions that you may have, and you don't want to discuss it with everybody, then the guy that looks like Abrams has been looking at the issue. And we're handling two beautiful guys, and they'll sit down and write everything out, and they'll just talk back to you immediately with whatever they find out or what happens. All right. [applause] The format today is, we're going to field the questions that we got out of the cars. That doesn't mean that we won't take live questions. We will, certainly they'll be filed off, and other concerns will come up. We're going to try to do this as orderly as we possibly can. My son Jamie has done this two, three, or four times before for us, and he's pretty good at answering questions. He's taken the questions, and put them to the computer, and kind of combined them if it was the same question. He won't ask all of them, he'll just ask one question. And we'll go from there, and at the end, we'll have a more open forum. This way, I think we get the most pressing questions out of the way. And with that, I'm going to turn to Jim.
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming. Yes, my job is not to shield these guys from tough questions, it's simply to make sure that all the questions have an opportunity to be answered. We have over thirty of them submitted so far, if we have anything useful to bring forward. But I'm going to start out, some of the questions are just specific individuals, and some are kind of to the group at large. So I think we'll start out with some others kind of catered to the least, to the group at large as well. So these ones are similar. Due to the increase of crime, is anything being done specifically about it? Is it crime individuals, or is it organizations? If it is an organization, has there been any traction on identifying these leaders? Why has crime increased, and when the area was quiet out before? So there's a kind of similar, so I've grouped them together. Who wants to tackle that first? All right.
If they're not, so if there's not, like, leaders of, you know, crime, what ends up happening is, is the high ground mystery. We go out and we steal a license plate off of a car that's somewhere off of Fifty-Five, I'm sorry, somewhere off of Fifty-Five, and then we'll slap that license plate onto our car, we'll start breaking into cars. And then we may steal a couple cars, maybe one guy gets out and jumps in and stolen a car, and then he'll ferry off, pick up three more guys. Now, I may or may not know who those three guys are. You can kind of see how it creates a spider web of suspects that comes on, where you may take off three or four, and then there are another three or four guys that will go out and have three or four friends. This goes on and on. And the bosses, you know, the chief has sent me basically a small army to deal with these things. Now, I don't like for him, you know, I've been down here for a while. This is the worst of three months I've had with this kind of cars, by far. My first thing down here is all shoplifting, 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 junk. Now, throughout the entire metropolitan area, this is like an insane that people are doing, that is, they're going out and stealing cars, and breaking into cars en masse. The reason we know is because people are being caught with property from our car break-ins in, like, Winston, or the city, or somewhere over in Carlin, I don't know. This is a very fluid thing, and since we are so basically strategically located, where we have two major interstates that run through our precincts, there's a lot of easy escape routes. So if you live off of Interstate Fifty-Five, which is about, because if all you have to do is get off the interstate, make a right turn, and you're suddenly in your street, you are somebody who is easier to have a crime committed, and a person who just jumped out of an interstate. And you may get a ring door footage, or your neighbor does, but it's usually stolen license plate. There are things that we can do about investigating that I don't talk about, but it makes it much more difficult. And so hopefully I answered your question, as far as it's not organized groups, it's just a bunch of people that, you may be busy, and the next night I do it with three of your people. But like I said, to begin with, the Spells Office just has warrants, and then the other group was damage protection now, and they were, one of the guys I had on there when they arrested the other guys. We are taking it to the law. It's just, this is a big precinct, so everything on this side of Fifty-Five is running armed to the city. And, you know, even if I have twenty policemen working in the middle of the night, it takes a lot to catch people that are breaking into cars, and the lights are going to sleep, so you're basically trying to find, so. And what do you say, "Well, what are you doing about it?" Well, these last three months, on the midnight watch, I have eighty failure to use. Now, once it's been there, you know, it's where one of my guys sees a car, does any plates on it, plates are stolen, and they turn on all their emergency lights, pull over, and they take off. So we're finding them, it's not stop, it doesn't fit our criteria to be able to chase them, because they may be in some areas of danger, or under a line. So I'm sure we're doing everything we can to stop this. It's just, right now, there's a lot of going on. Also, I got to that question.
Representative Murphy asked, and I didn't say, I don't think I have something to say. And I do want to mention that, I want to thank you again for inviting me, as was Captain Snyder, so this is the second time I've been able to do it. And I agree with everything Captain Snyder is saying, but I would just add, one of, logistically, one of the issues that we also have to get away is that the individuals are getting younger and younger, and they're being recruited, because the older individuals involved, they'll have the younger kids who are going to go to juvenile, to juvenile courts, not in our jurisdiction, and juvenile courts are a different animal, obviously, and they're going to be out by soon, that's a result. And so that's one logistical issue. And then, let's say a second, please, just hear what I'm saying. I'm not making a political issue or a political statement. I'm simply saying that, as a government, the workers that are out there, these people are getting, and that's part of the problem, is that it went from breaking into a car to now individuals armed, especially younger kids, with these guns, who don't know how to use them. And that just is, that presents another set of challenges for law enforcement, especially. So I couldn't agree more with Captain Snyder, and it's something that we are taking seriously. And I'll just close on this question, there's one thing structurally that we changed in our office, is that when we bring cases to our warrant office, sometimes our attorneys get it wrong, sometimes they get it right, sometimes they get it wrong. And so we, I hire a former chief to be a liaison, to be a liaison, to law enforcement, so if the warrant office gets a warrant, they just disagree, and they have the direct chain, the direct line up to us to get it right, until we sit down and talk about it and make certain that we're all on the same page. So we are working together, and we are taking this seriously, and I'm going to continue to do so. Also, I forgot I heard Councilman Tim Fitch up there, so good to see him there too.
Just, just, since this was brought up, guns are a problem. They're a problem because they're legal. They're legal because they're stealing, stealing other cars. My only suggestion to you is, don't ever leave the car unlocked, or one near driveway with firearms, and this is security, this is why they need to. I can't do a lot of that crime locally, but one thing I can do is I compare the form, we've got plenty of them up there, and I've got some up here, that basically, if you would take that form, and you put your insurance information on it, motor vehicle information, including your VIN number, and then if you have any firearms, a description of it, the serial number, all of that, fill out this form, take a picture of it, put it in your phone, and if for some reason it gets stolen, you'll have something that you can immediately give to the police, where if they recover it, they'll know it's yours for one, and they'll have something really to go on. If they catch somebody with a gun, they have no way to know if it's stolen or not. If they have a serial number on record, that it's stolen, that's going to take a illegal gun off the, off the street. So please, help yourself with these forms, where you fill it out, take a picture, put it on your phone, and I'm telling you, it will help it to reset a lot.
I just throw a quick one in there, and hopefully some of the police will expand on what I've mentioned here. But when we look at the police, we see these guys in uniforms, and we think that's our first line of defense. But in reality, we are the first line of defense. The things that we do in our lives matter with this, with this issue. Locking your cars when they're left outside. We started at our house, a new practice. We now, a lot of your garage door openers have a lock feature on it, so that if there is a garage door opener stolen, you can't, it doesn't work. And so I found out that it does not work, because we had locked ours the night before, and I went outside, pushed the garage door open, garage door opened, I got in my car, and started to back out, and I pushed that button, and it wouldn't go down. It works, and it's a simple thing, so now it's become part of our routine, just like you check your doors when you go to bed at night, you make sure all your doors are locked. I can see that flashing light in the reflection of the glass in my garage door to know that that's on. Just, you know, because that's one of the nuances that we've seen in the recent crime, like these guys are getting into the lodges to steal stuff out, and that's all they're doing, is getting into that car, in that garage door, and getting in and helping themselves. Think about the things that you can do to deter the criminals. I was in a relative neighborhood for a couple of years after I got out of college, and my friend, friends used to be funny, because I put my club on the car, on my wheel, and they said, "Criminals can get into that." I said, "You're exactly right. They're going to look at my car and go, 'That car's, that car's easy. I'm going to get in that car faster.'" And they're going to do the same thing when you're, they're at your house, they're going to check that door, and see that it's, that it's locked, and their underlines are much easier and quicker time. So you are the first line of defense. And I'm sure that the police can add some other suggestions. So we're going to go ahead and ask that question, because it's on here, which is, what specifically can homeowner slash car owners do to prevent break-ins and secure their areas? And then there's one that I'll tie into that, is there a specific location that the break-ins are taking place? You touched about it earlier, Fifty-Five, Two Fifty-Five corridor, and is there a profile of victims? Is it younger individuals, older individuals, is there a geographic location, or economic?
It's everywhere in the precinct, so in any major thoroughfare, you know, because somebody who's not from this area, they're like, "All right, well, let's go down." The first place they're going to do is, they're going to Wondlemur, or Tussam Ferry, or Telegraph, or Leamie Ferry, and then they're just going to start sprouting up a couple off on the side streets. But from what we have seen on Ring Door footage, which kind of puts you into the, you know, the eyes of the bad guy, what is it that they're looking at? They're going to the houses that have multiple cars in the car. And then when they get up there, the people that left, all these good things in the car. Now, there's a certain vehicle that they're looking for that they think may have a gun inside, you know, and they all have their own ideas of, that car looks like they have a gun, that car looks like they have, or whatever. They are not breaking out stuff unless there is something that they really want in the car. And you've seen that in, I bet you I looked at sixty-three doorbell cameras, and only one of them broke the car. And there was a lot of fun, I'd been back and forth to a stolen car, talking amongst the other one before, and finally came back and broke the window of the car, and eventually this was first. I think I had twenty guns taken from cars the last two months. So places like Orleans are parking lots, things where people may be perceived to have a gun in their car, but actually, if you haven't anyone, people just throw the gun by their seat, or they leave it in the center console. But, you know, people aren't stealing somebody's keys and then wax pressing the key down, and, you know, stealing the car later on. These are cars that are, where the keys are left in the car. Or crimes that are occurring because of garage door openers, unlock car, and also the guys want to let them just come. I mean, I can, I've seen everything imaginable that somebody's done. And then somebody becomes homeless, or gets tired, and just goes into their house. But this isn't some mastermind, you know, it's, they're just picking low hanging fruit and stuff. So hopefully that gives you an idea of what it looks like. It's not always the poor little house, you know, an elderly person inside, it's a young family that has five cars parked out front, really well lit, you can just walk up, and look in real quick, and drive the car, it's not like you go through the whole thing. It's what we've been seeing on the Ring Door footage. Well, they're not duplicating the keys, they're just, they're just taking the key from you when you get into the car. No, I meant that as a joke. They're not, they're only taking the cars where the keys are inside.
Here's another policing question, I can't hear, right back up here. How many police officers are assigned to the South County precincts? Are the number of police officers equal, or similar to those that are controlled by North County? And then you touched on how many stops pedestrian tracks, or stops, I think that way, the question specifically, is how many vehicle stops and pedestrian tracks are being done on an average night, that are not including typical traffic stops in the underlines?
Serious questions. All right, so I have eleven meetings. Casino and the mall are also most likely to be that. Okay, so in the middle of the night, there are eleven officers that are working. One of them works at the desk at the precinct, where if you're filming, you'll be able to see them, and then there's somebody at the casino, there's somebody at the mall until it closes, and you become kind of an over in that area, and then the other guys are looking through four, five, six, seven, eight. So if a husband and wife are involved in a domestic, or a group of kids you find in whatever, those are all two cars assigned, so no matter what, you're going to have two cars going to different calls for service, depending on what kind of priority it is. I would say that of the eight or nine people that are working, they usually stop, you work for five to six cars on a really busy night, but they may handle, so the more radio calls you get, the less want to use stuff that you're doing. You want to go after a speed, stop a car, less of that is done as radio calls go on. So in the neck, we've been talking about North County and South County, I think, they have, they answer a lot more radio calls than we're second, 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 but they, they have different calls for service. They have more accurate consoles, they have more theft in some of the areas, but as far as the way that it's even, it's even according to the geographic layer and the number of calls, so. We're stacked very well, my bosses keeps out the county stacked as far as our manpower, and it's just a matter of deploying those people with the intelligence of what's going on crime lines, each now. We may have an incident that goes on at the casino, and four or five police officers have to go down there. Well, that's four or five police officers coming from somewhere, so usually, everybody's in mind, it's the five closest people. I'm sorry, the five closest people. So you can kind of see if, with two major interstates, if a major accident occurs that requires four police officers to work, that's four police officers that are not in our neighborhood. Does that make sense? DWI hits a house, and then we got a cordon off of the area, and all these other things, we have those manpower to handle all those things, but somebody's not going to be driving down to Iraq, and driving around your president's streets, I don't know. So, do you guys spell this?
I'm going to take some executive privilege here and ask some questions, so. Maybe this is a good for the chief as well. We saw recently somebody, I love recently somebody, this, this, say, this guy, this. Do you feel like you have enough officers on the beat? I definitely don't mind being asked. This is where I go. Chief Fitch, your board house. All right, going for the one interview, which is going to come, Juan Conchis is the commander of the outbreak. And I want to go back to some of the cars, you know, city just passed legislation for checking doors, if a crime, just sitting there talking with Councilman Fitch, he asked me if we had that legislation in San Antonio, which we do not, but just an icon. But just in my conversation with Phil Ainsworth, he wanted to write up legislation to get that done. So that going around checking doors could be a crime. Do we have enough officers on the, on the beat? St. Louis County Police Department, that's like a number of police departments throughout the nation, have a serious manpower shortage. A serious manpower shortage and shortage, and we suffer from that also. Uh, to the point where we're looking at changing a couple of our precincts, you know, twelve hours shift so that we do have more people on the, in these certain precincts to see if we can, uh, beef up the areas of their control. It's just on a trial basis, for now, we're just gonna use the North County precinct and the West County precinct. To answer your question, we're struggling with recruiting. We're struggling with retention. And, and I say that for not just St. Louis County, St. Louis City, it's throughout the nation. It's throughout the nation. I do assessments for organizations called KLEA. And no matter where I go, I hear the same story. They have problems with overall recruitment, uh, recruiting. They have problems with minority recruitment, they have problems with female recruitment, police officers. It's nationwide. We're struggling to make it better. We have a strong recruiting process going on, a program going on now, and open to new citizens and vendors. Yes, sir.
I have a question. How many police officers in the district have had over a hundred percent increase in crime last two months? Has there been any increase in the amount of police officers in the evening during this statistical time piece? Thus, by the time you come to our town, have you made the grease with control during those hours?
The precinct captains have the opportunities, opportunities to make their schedule fit those type of situations. We have overlay, um, shift changes, we're doing a certain period of time. There are more officers on the, on, on the street. I'm not sure how many captain has on the street.
No, that's how you control, that's how you control the streets. But like I said, laws help me be a part of government, so.
Where is that part of government?
There, they work in the middle of the night, so that's a lot of that, that's, uh, SRU people. And the people that basically catch these people in other areas.
That's your special crime, correct?
Yeah, we have, we actually have three of them.
Okay, so when you say you have eleven officers that control this area at one given time, it was confusing because that makes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We do fully have eleven officers.
Normal.
Yeah, so that's what I have to deal with. And then when actually the crime spike, which what I was talking about already into the murder thefts, to the point to where it's past that it's ever normally been.
Yes, this is about.
Precinct, that precinct, he was able to send down a lot of that. Well, the results have been over the last forty-eight hours, we've had twelve people arrested with warrants issued. Over three quarters of them, and then, uh, the ones that checked in county, they're still being booked. So they're gonna be transferred to counties to be interviewed, probably getting more of that.
When you say they're booked, I mean, have not prosecuted from third verse, are they getting right out of that?
Well, I, I, I mean, they did a lot of something, that's something that will pay. I don't have any control.
I'd like to. Great job, and I change my other question for.
Let's answer the question.
Why aren't there tax breaks for non-on-the-road, like, yes?
Man, let's answer one question that you asked.
We did do that the other night.
I was simply not saying as far as bonds, I think people might not understand, that's the judge. Judge sets the bonds. We recommend it, but the judge sets the bonds at the end of the day. And, and, you know, we do ask for higher bonds in these types of cases. And then, and then the judge, some judges are gonna be tougher, some judges are gonna be more lenient. So, you know, it depends on that.
Don't, don't you ask for the bond?
We, we.
You, don't you ask for the bond?
We can, we can, we can go. We got a bunch of questions.
I'm just gonna say this one real quick. I got off the phone with him, he sent out a group that specializes in the identification, following, and spike stripping of stolen cars. It was a Volvo, they found it in the fourth, they spiked it in the third, and he got arrested, warrants issued, all that kind of stuff. We are doing that, it's just.
Watch your mouth.
Yep.
So there's a couple of questions about, so I'll go ahead and ask some of those right now. And there's a few here, let's see. You were in favor of allowing and not severely prosecuting low-level criminals so they don't go to jail? Is that a reason for our crime increase? And is there a plan to solve that? Um, there's also, what have you done to apprehend the theft rings who are beginning with in the evening? Do we have a plan to prevent these in the future? Is there an increase in crime rate now? It seems to be enhanced concern. Is the data support that? There's something, I really have a couple of prosecutions and bonds that we'll answer in a second.
I'm trying to answer all of those. Um, and the first one is, with respect to the bond now, I got a question at the top row. Is that yes, we do make a recommendation for the bond. Defense, defense council also makes a recommendation. And the judge will want to do what the judge wants to do. And for example, we had one case where we asked for a fifty thousand dollar bond. The judge granted it, it made it ten percent. And there's nothing I can do. You can jump up the tab, say we disagree, but I think the judge, judge is in that position because they need to make those, those decisions. Uh, second, uh, I want to make certain I was clear, that's why I kind of talked about, about what would be the statement? What we consider low level, I mean, not violent, what we consider serious. We look at low level conversion programs as substitutes, disorder, think, you know, some people who are struggling with drug abuse who need help. And here, and here's where the data supports us. And this office has never had a data person until I hired one. Because if you don't track the data and follow the data, you don't know what your work is working. And we've never had that in this office, and we thought it was important to do. And so we go across Missouri, one year out of jail, our recidivism rates for our real offender rates are forty-five to fifty percent. And then you go ten out of ten years out, we look nationally at our recidivism rates are eighty percent. So we're talking half to eighty, to eight out of ten people who get arrested are coming out and committing more crimes. Now, with those actual low-level crimes we're talking about, those, those people struggling with drug abuse, and those are eighty percent of those cases, we're talking eighty percent recidivism rates. So when we give them in our hands, those low-level offenders, and I'm talking about the carjackers and the car thefts, they do not qualify for our purge program. With those low-level offenders, the data is showing that it works. They're not reoffending, they're not getting in trouble again. We're talking a ninety-two success rate with those individuals. So to that last point, and this is kind of right in our code for this, that's why we approached the departments like Captain Snyder, Chief Gregory, and several other units of powers with that task force. Because we had so many, um, departments that were seeing this up here. And the problem that, that, that we have is that we're all on different pages. We're not seeing the big picture. So we want, we want actual prosecutors in that office at everything funnel proof. So when we see Joe Low, who is doing, uh, car racing, car breakings all over the county, we have that, we have a system in place where that prosecutor's like, hold on. This might not have been that serious of a case, and on its own, but we've connected him with several others. And now we can prosecute that case more seriously. Ask for a higher bond because we know that this individual, that there wasn't just a one-time situation. And, and also working with law enforcement, being able to make certain that we're streamlining things and that we know that what's happening in law, and what's happening in South County and West County, because these individuals, they're, these car thieves, they're not saying, they're not assigning themselves particular jurisdictions. They're all over the place. And so that's why we have to work together and make certain that we are, we are on the same page so that we can address these issues, Captain.
Uh, I just have a couple of other specifics here, so I want to make sure we dive down on the points. Uh, so I got county here that we want incarceration for violence offenders, not just arrest and release. Uh, warrants aren't issued, but perpetrators are released or are held, and how long? Our account's backed up because of COVID, so it's releasing perpetrators. Just put them back, do they just put them back in the streets because of COVID? Uh, do we have a plan for handling that? Individuals were apprehended for auto theft as part of an argument because of the neighborhood in the middle of the night. Worthy of which was charged, was announced, or would be required for release. Did his arrest lead to other arrests? A lot kind of in that vein, of course.
Um, when judge is considering a bond, judges look at several factors with the individual. They look at severity of the charge. They look at the history of the individual. Uh, and they base their, their, their determination of whether they're gonna release them on those factors. Now, what we do is, and working with law enforcement and the task force helps us even more, is that we're able to give more information to the judge, to say, judge, if you are thinking about the warrant and the bond, here's some other things that you, that you should consider. And we are doing that. And, and, and again, you know, it depends on, on individual judge, on individual judges. And at the same time, we're gonna do everything we can, uh, to, to, to make certain that they understand what we're doing and what we're trying to do with these. And, and, and I'll even say this, that's why, um, formats in town halls like this are so important. Because we can also go back and say, judge, I'm also hearing from members of the community that this is a growing problem. Because data-wise, there isn't a huge spike in these kind of crimes. But I think the problem is, one of the problems is that we're seeing more violence with them. We're seeing these individuals that are armed, which makes it even, which obviously makes it even, makes it much more severe. And so, uh, so yeah, you know, all those things are, are factored into bonds. And I, again, I just want to be clear, should I just make a decision on bonds?
I'm not saying, well, that would be, try to answer and get this.
Well, my question for you is this. Um, I own a business on LeMay Ferry Road. I've been hit eight times in the last year. In the last three months, I've had six catalytic converters stolen. I called your office and they told me to ask for a, um, a supervisor from the police. The police refused to send a supervisor and they laughed. They say, when the officers come out, they say, we're here, you've been through this route. You know, we've arrested these same people sixty, eighty times. They will not be prosecuted and they will not spend a night in jail. So why do you want us to, why do you want us to go out and file this complaint again, Mr. Yeager? Well, so, so specifically, here's why I want you to file the complaint. Why, why in less than three months, I've been hit six times? I've had to pay for new catalytic converters right below Sam's Club on LeMay Ferry Road. And it's like it's a joke. Don't tell me it's not happening on a regular basis. Don't tell me you don't know. Here's the thing, I talk to other business owners, I talk to the bank. The bank knows the people that are stealing them because they know who are bringing in the checks from the recycling, from the scrap yards.
Yeah.
So here's what I know, the police aren't doing their job. I'm told there's one person for all auto crimes for all of South. I don't know what that is. Columbia, across the river in Columbia, Illinois, there are eight people assigned to auto crimes. I have taken video of it. We've turned it in and they said, well, you never turned the video in. We turned it into the South Precinct two, three, four times. The last time I got a, a letter, you need to turn the video in. I've placed phone calls to the person that I'm supposed to turn the video into, they never returned the phone calls. First off, I believe that the police are overworked, but I do have a question. We passed a tax increase that was supposed to put two police officers in every car. That's not happening. If you had two police officers in every car, you wouldn't have to take two guys, two cars off the street for every call. Something has to give here before it becomes violent. Who's gotta be shot or killed before you guys take it seriously?
I agree with you, you know, stolen vehicle is not like a responsibility. I don't have to put a couple of hours together and drive off with a vehicle. It's gotten to a point now where you can keep, uh, you can get that student or that car started. What happened for that is that it's more than a lot, they're gonna have to rob you unforcet. And that's what's going on here. It is impossible that it can be more violent. I know, I think it was in two thousand, um, eighteen, we passed a proposition P bill to get the police to, partner to hire more officers, come up with two-man cars, all those type of things that, that bills was done. During that time, it was passed. A lot of that money that we thought was coming to the police department, it's diverted to other, other departments of St. Louis County. So yes, we are, um, we're falling short of two-man cars for a lot of the scarcity that I know for a fact. North County precinct, a lot of scarcity, and South County precinct, depending on the manpower, they can't put two-man cars together. Uh, so we are working on trying to get that, get that done. Yes, sir.
How many of your resources, police officers are, are reallocated in the city for their needs in the given night? So do you guys share resources at all?
With, with. Yes, yes.
So I pay my taxes in the county, we're having our own problems here. Why do you gentlemen not fix our own problems? And all of this has some of those problems.
We share intelligence, information from St. Louis City. I mean, crime doesn't just stop here, St. Louis County goes there, St. Louis City comes over here. So we talk all the time about, um, sharing intelligence, because a lot of times it's not people going here, but we're in St. Louis City. So we do share the information. It's not like we're sending St. Louis County officers in St. Louis City to do work. St. Louis City's not sending their officers over here. We do work together on some initiatives to get things done.
So that for sure does not happen. We don't send our own police officers to St. Louis City.
I'm just not catching anything you're saying.
How many officers in the given night do you have on patrol in St. Louis County, which is approximately five hundred and eight square miles?
We have.
He has eleven.
No, he has more than eleven officers in. That's probably eleven officers that he has on a certain beat.
That would be St. Louis County, right? From my house, which is the furthest house in St. Louis County. So for St. Louis City, some river to Perry, to over to fifty-five, a radius area, I don't know exactly how far it was, to my house, which is the furthest house south from St. Louis County. This gentleman says he has eleven officers to patrol that at, at one given night. The eleven.
To, to, to patrol the entire South County precinct, yes, that's what he has per shift. He has more officers assigned to his, to his precinct than just eleven.
I, I, I said, but at a given night on.
And you had, you had, you had mentioned earlier, yes, you know, I'm not one of the nine, in fact, the prison shop, the manpower shop, okay?
I don't, don't disagree with that. I asked my specific question was, so he has eleven in the given night. With your other jurisdictions, right? So all of that, all of the companies, five hundred and eight square miles that you gentlemen patrol.
Depending on the precinct that you're, that you're working, working in, I think the North County precinct has more officers per shift. You know, this is a large precinct.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that. My exact question was, of that, do you guys share officers to go to St. Louis County to do whatever patrols or assistance, anything? On St. Louis, sorry, guys.
I just, no, we don't, we don't send St. Louis County officers to do work in St. Louis City. We share intelligence. And city does not send officers to St. Louis County to do St. Louis County work. No, sir, we do not do that. Uh, that's all.
Now, I'm gonna ask the state office some of these questions now. What, what do you do? Go on the. There's a, I'm gonna read these guys a record for a second, probably talk, uh, there's an interesting one here about Spire Natural Gas, which is a little different. I'll give it to the representatives here. So Spire Natural Gas, that'll force shut down the St. Louis pipeline. Uh, is there a plan, anybody who wants this, is there a plan, uh, if there needs to be evacuation? Because they're talking about six hundred and sixty thousand. Because they're talking about 660,000 or some shortage for natural gas this winter. If there is a night evacuation, because we don't have heat, is our plan to affect property? Anybody want to take that?
No. I would follow the spire pipeline. As you have through the news media. It's not a done deal yet. I don't know that it's worth panicking over. First of all, that, the projection is, is if we had a horrible, horrible winter, we could run out of natural gas. And that would be a pipeline filled with that need. And sure Spire right now is drumming up all these horror stories that we're going to freeze our liver. But the matter is, I don't believe that's believable happening. There's no way planned for evacuations, because we're so far from that. The courts have still, they have final say. Supreme Court didn't hear one of the cases, but that doesn't mean they won't hear others. Now, that's a pipeline that's been built, it's been running for two years. Now, the environmentalists are coming up saying, well, it wasn't approved the right way, so shut it down. It has a need for the community. We don't believe in the end, that the courts are going to shut it down. But that's, that's yet to be seen. Our winters have been such that we have a situation where it would be bad for the people. So, I'd say state could have done that one no better.
There's a couple of questions to kind of neighborhood watch news. One is actually specifically addressed to Representative McDonald, which says, do you support the local vigilante posts on social media to gather and patrol neighborhoods? Another one here, instead of giving a suggestion, this was from a reporter of the large, from the time of emergency in Texas, called enhanced neighborhood patrolling. There does seem to be some coordination on Facebook. So which of those groups are you? Give me that, that vigilante.
So first off, as a member of the military, I do not like that word vigilante. But let's, I do like the act of people protecting the neighborhood, neighborhood watch, important. I, I, as this crime was risen, I've realized I don't really look out my window all that often. And we just need to do that, and I think it's important. I mentioned earlier that it's great that you all are hosting these things, and I really believe it had a lot to do with driving us to have this event. You know, for social media and all of its detractors, there are some positive things. I would say this is a positive thing, opening this discussion. Being more aware is better for everyone. You know, knowing to lock your doors, knowing to, I said, look out your windows from time to time. Go for a walk in your neighborhood, participate with your subdivision in their neighborhood watch exercises. All of those things, Matt, all of those things make a difference. So I absolutely, you know, minus the word vigilante, I do support those activities. But I will say this, and I hope the police will follow up at some point on this. I heard, I heard a story about one of these incidences where a citizen confronted one of these groups with a firearm. And I would venture to guess that the police are going to ask you not to do that. I really, I really don't want to see someone get hurt. I do not support that. I want, your first action in that case should be 911, let them know that there's a crime at law. If someone enters your home, I absolutely hope you will defend, defend yourself, defend your family. But I would caution you against actually pursuing these criminals. That's the job of our police, is you're putting yourselves in grave endangerment.
Hi. So I'm Karen Martin, and I'm the person who gives this objection about neighborhood protection. So I live off of, but I also own a home in Dallas, Texas. And what we, our neighborhoods are different, so this would have to be modified. We have a thousand, two thousand homes in the neighborhood. And what we do is we hire the Dallas City Police Officer, obviously off duty ones, but they are driving our neighborhood in their cars. And we pay $300 a year for this, but to go to, it's only 11 people in the same, you know, if it is something, a lot of police officers controlling their neighborhood for 300 bucks a year, I can sign IR. The police officer, he has his cell phone that we pay for, so that if we have an issue at our home, we can call 911 and then his cell phone. Since he's off duty, he is not allowed to leave the area that he is in, let's say something that happens in Athens or whatever, that he has to go to that. And it just is a lot of additional protection for a very little bit of money. And I would be willing to help to support that, that if I have any need to pursuing something that would be similar to that here, and it worked really well.
Thank you for that. And I know, I'm aware that there is someone that goes on, right? We have police officers that, often, I remember as a bank employee when I was much younger, asking my dad, policeman that sits in your bank all the time? It's a work, it's actually often, we pay him, it's often time to do that.
But this is actually poorly, we weren't up by 11:30, we have officers, we have my hands to say, it's a very organized thing, and it's run very well.
And I would like the police to address that, if they're willing to do my answer.
Speaking of 911, I have friends who are asleep, and I have stories of eight minutes, 10 minutes, whatever. There's a lot of users of the 911 system, the medical, and should not access another level. Two questions. Can we have alternate systems for 911, with the low level medical? Are we going to prosecute the low level medical? And what is, you know, what are they looking for in future for this response time? We've got a factor that's stated with response time, where people are perpetrating all the law enforcement, we don't actually have, but when you all have the resources, and it's not a reason, there's a lot of safety to obtain numbers for like, what happens to people, whatever, on 911.
Thank you. I'm not too great. Not great, that's for sure, but we have not made any kind of alterations as far as making our 911 given in different categories of non-emergency calls. In a phone rang 911, we would care less about whether we answered it or respond to it, and it's called, you know, yes, it happens quite often, but we don't have any kind of altering that phone number. Yes, sir.
So I was given by fourth precinct, a non-emergency police number. Non-emergency, that you can call if you have a car, let's say that is illegally parked, a abandoned vehicle, something that is not an emergency, and I've used it, we're going to last two months, about three times, and it works. And there's somebody responding to it, and they understand that it's not emergency, right? It is a non-emergency. I can provide you with that number, maybe you're not aware that that number is available in your system.
That number's always available to communication, the non-emergency number, the non-emergency numbers in each precinct you can call if you want to report the incident, precinct there, those numbers there.
And to that lady's point, perhaps that's the number that should be called when you don't have something that's serious. I think that's where.
Exactly. That's the number that should be called, when you don't have an emergency, and I think our prompt tells, tells you, there's an answer, prompt to that 911 call, to the non-emergency call, I'm sorry, they'll tell you if it's an emergency, hang up and dial 911.
Would you provide that number to the?
Yes, I can give it to the guys before you leave. I want to get back to your question you had, sir, you were asking about city and county working together. There are some details that we have. We have our regional helicopter program, we have a city officer that flies with county, county that they work in a program, we have city and county officers working together eventually, so. But if we're talking about control, no, sir, we don't have that. Thank you.
I'm just going to do, you, if you may, for a while, and I'm going to get to this, we have about 20 minutes left, so you kind of wrap this up, I have maybe six more questions here. Go for it.
Yeah, six my own, basically, while we're applying police, and how far is county?
I saw it, I'm a family owner. And what's those reasons? We are right now allocated about 900, 700, some 900, probably about 800. For those of you who are just, can practice. Your time is, I guess what causes, the most progress is to be, you know. I know the court has said, because we thought it was a big pay decrease to the police, and right now, and maybe they need the pay rate. I understand a lot of nights, I'm in other areas, I, and I gotta say, on the worst of all, 60, 68, or 70, I was just making up some money. And St. Louis, listen here, we need maybe, we, 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 we appreciate that, thank you. Yes, and it's probably money as was distributed other places. You mentioned something about the manpower shortage, reasons why we don't, are there so short on police officers? We're looking at, we do exit interviews when our police officers leave our department, and we try to find out why they're leaving our department. And you would be surprised, the number of police officers that are leaving, getting out of the profession altogether. They're going to do something else, responding to more money, and what they're doing, they probably have jobs where they have more time with their families opposed to working the hours that we share. But yes, there is, there are those reasons for that. I know back, a while back, we were hearing about the police, you know, that kind of discouraged a lot of police officers, they wanted to get out because they feel like they had the support. So, I think that's kind of dying out now to a point. But those are maybe some of the reasons that we're losing, and you don't have the numbers why so hard for us to recruit police officers. I'm sorry.
How many police officers are currently exhausted?
And that's, that's what happens when we have the manpower shortage, they are exhausted. Thank you for that consideration yesterday.
There is a neighborhood police question here. Any efforts to be from the police would require a revealed proposition in the sales tax, meaning a scorecard of police precincts' proficiencies? Is there any one, or is there information that we can handle? How well do police?
Yes, we have surveys that we send out for our research and analysis unit. We send them out twice a year, just to give some kind of idea from citizens that we serve as to how we're doing. And that's done through our research and analysis, probably some of the smartest people that we have on our police department, and having those surveys.
What is, for example, here, prosecutor bill, we've got a lot of questions about ballots, and if you can answer, Representative Murphy, I'm down on the spot here, there's been a lot of criminal justice reform bills that go through DC, and it's a regional assembly, that includes some expansions, and anything like that, that's anything that's gone through just being contacted to bail, the ability to get out, legislature, where's actions, corporate links, what do you guys know?
So, there has definitely been a movement in the general assembly for some of these reforms. I've been reluctant to support that. I don't get one of the statistics that prosecutor ballot brought up, and that's, that's the word pursuit is, I don't want, you know, that person serves their time, I don't want to set them up for failure as soon as they walk out the door either. I don't, I, I think that's a, that's a big component to what some people are trying to do with these efforts. We need to do better at it. You know, when you send someone out that prison door, that anybody else in this room, person who's most likely to commit a crime is going to be that person. And so we need to set those people up for success. I know it's, it sounds crazy to talk about somebody that's convicted of a crime to do that, but it's about us, right? I mean, that person is going to, has the highest potential of harming any one of us, making our lives miserable, and stealing a car, or hurting someone. So, you know, while I haven't supported a lot of these reforms, because I felt like they were soft on crime, that's, that's one of the issues that's kind of a big deal to me, I'd like to see us as a general assembly do more. You know, it sounds contrary to logic that we're taking a felon and setting them up for success, but if we don't set them up for success, we're setting ourselves up for failure.
Yeah, when we get these bills, the House, I always use a question, is this going to hurt my citizens, or is it going to help them? And oftentimes, you get bills that says, you know, we need to look at, oh, we're setting our bounds, sending somebody to jail for 10 years for having popped in a car. Is that something that makes sense to us? Now, I'm an old guy, I remember back in the day when I was in high school, having a joint with federal offense. And if you got caught with a joint, not only did you go to jail, you lost your right to vote. So we've come a long way from there. So you, you look at those things with the eye on, is this right or is this wrong? Then, you know, then there's, there's other ones that come across, and you go, well, this makes no sense at all. And there was a bill that said, oh, if somebody was murdered, somebody went to jail, and they now turn 65, we have a life sentence, maybe we should let them out. And I said, wait, you made a promise to their loved ones, this person could stay in jail for the rest of their lives, and now we're going to say, Chris is 65, and Miss is 50, young. So, so you know, you measure all of these things. As far as bond, I mean, we've got problems in the board right now. Prosecutor, I'm talking about cash bonds, and some of the jurisdictions, courts are now doing, where they're letting people go, basically, Scott Free, and then it's nothing to do, is that hurt, police is that hurt? You know, and I think probably the legislature needs to look, how do we do bond? Have we allowed payment laws? Only people responsible, they're caught doing something. And I think that's a lot of what I'm hearing here, is it's not, you know, should we do anything? It's when we catch somebody that's violating your rights, violating your property, and done it in such a way that was just out and out, you know, it wasn't an accident or a bad mistake, it was planned. I mean, they're the things that we look at and say, that's a different thing now. I think prosecutor said that, he's not looking at this as just a low level of crime. It's something that was purposely done, it was planned, it came after you, and it violated you. And when your, when your goods are stolen, and your cars are broken into, and they wave guns at your cameras, that's personal, and we understand. In the legislature, we do look at and take into consideration.
I've got a couple of questions for prosecutor Bell, I'm going to try to wrap some of these up, so that we can have a little bit of time for reading that, I guess. Okay, we got it, yes, we got it. There's one that's, how can division classes work, and what are the success rates? Diversion, I can, right, division classes work, and what are the success rates? That makes better sense.
I want to take a quick step here, and kind of respond to some of the other things that you're doing. And I want people to understand that.
And I, I want people to understand that, uh, we all have our problems. Our office, we're not a control room. Uh, we prosecute all these things, the bellies in St. Louis County. We get about roughly eight to ten thousand referrals from law enforcement per year. And, um, and so I just wanted to spell some of the facts. So, because, you know, sometimes things get criticized and information gets filtered through those channels. And so I want to do what we said, if you were of the mindset of, oh, we were doing this and that, tell you directly from us with the data to back it up. So essentially, we've received since our, our, uh, previous administration, about the same number of referrals from law enforcement. But we keep a, a database called PDK Prosecution By Card, the same one that we've been using in the office for years to help us track them. And essentially, we have received about the same number of domestic violence cases, but we prosecuted forty-one percent more. We received about the same number of homicide referrals, we prosecuted fifty-eight percent more. Uh, we received about the same number of assaults, we prosecuted ninety percent more. So whatever you may have heard or didn't hear, uh, these are the facts. We have the data to back it up. I have my data person right here to make sure I got my numbers right. Uh, and so I just want to make certain that you understand. Um, and additionally, with the car thefts, the car break-ins, we heard you. I got, I have my car broken into. That is, that is not only frustrating, but depending on where, you know, your garage, your home, that is scary. So trust me, we understand that we take it seriously. That's why we created that task with law enforcement, because we wanted to figure out how can we make certain that we are sharing intelligence, just like Chief Gregory said, to make sure that we're doing as good a job as we can for you all as possible. And, and I'm gonna add one more thing about, uh, yes, we all, there's all things that, there's things that we all can do better, no question about it. But I don't think there's anyone better situated to tell you the type of work that they do. Because we get their cases, we review their investigations, because we gotta make sure that we can prove those cases beyond reasonable doubt. And I'm gonna tell you, these guys in jails are good. And, and I mean that. You know, some of you may have heard about, uh, more recently, the, uh, capital supply case that we just got a conviction on. He will never get out again. That would be too much. And the investigation that even these offices did, the detectives under, under the leadership of Chief Gregory, was nothing short of a waste. Uh, the way that they were able to track this individual down, that wasn't just showing up like on Law and Order, solve the case in twenty minutes and then get to the next episode. No, that was, that was dedicated, detailed, thorough, accurate work. And so when we were able to get that case and working with them, we were able to bring it home to where listening to the video decided, you know what? I don't even want to try, I try, because we know how it's coming in. And so I just want to make certain that, yes, there's things that we all work to do better. And that's why we're here, that's why we'll do these types of things, because we want to hear the record from you. But I want you to know that they're good, they're good. I guess I should actually answer the question that I was brought to. Uh, with our conversion program, uh, and again, car thefts, carjacks, they do not qualify for our conversion program. Please communicate that to your friend when you're out and about. We do not let them live, they are going to be prosecuted traditionally through criminal justice system. So the people, the bucket of people that are in there are your substitutes, those struggling substitutes, sort of mental health issues. They haven't harmed anyone, they, they don't, they're only a threat to themselves. And so of that, of those individuals, there's a bucket now of about twelve hundred people that fit that category, who are either reevaluated by a conversion program, in treatment, or successfully treated by a program. And that's that number that I told you about, we're talking about eighty percent success rate, ninety-two percent success rate. That is the data that shows that it works. And these, couple that with the other side of the coin, because that's one side, that's one side of the house that we do. That other side, prosecuting seriously violent crimes, and those are the numbers I told you, fifty-eight percent, forty-one percent, ninety percent incidences in, in, in the cases that we're, that we are prosecuting. And, and I tell you, that was what we intended to come into this office, and that's what we're gonna continue to try and do. And we're gonna keep the data so that you can hold us accountable.
Got a couple more for the, uh, please. Uh, one has to do with House Bill eighty-five, which I believe was the Second Amendment Preservation Act, uh, which allows if a federal law enforcement takes the dog in the federal government crime, uh, the department can be sued for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, has that been impacted in St. Louis County? Save on the Second Amendment Preservation Act.
Um, you know, one thing, the most successful thing in dealing with police, police work is to have a good relationship with prosecuting attorneys' offices. And Wes and Bell and I can sit here and praise each other for the job that we do just as easy as. But I give him and his office the same praise because that's how we get work done, that's how we get clients shut off. Just like the one that you mentioned the other day, firework on our part, even firework on his, on his part. So that's the number one. House Bill eighty-five. As of right now, we're still working with federal law enforcement. Our, our county councils have given us the okay to continue to do that work. Uh, we have not had any cases brought to our attention yet where we violated House Bill eighty-five. I think there's a lot of work to be done with House Bill eighty-five so that, you know, they can, you know, get things better for us. We are locked down working with the state. We get more, uh, higher sentences when we work with the, with the bad law enforcement cases. So I think they need to stop and think about, I'm sure they have, I'm sure they have thought about it before they work with the, the act this time. And we look at that and not take those resources from us. Again, I don't know if they take it from us, they take the resources from the bad, so I can't even work with us. So I'm sure they'll hopefully look back again.
And then I have one more question for the, uh, the beggars and gang handlers in the corners. Uh, how can we get rid of the gang handling, expecting the resources to the corners and creating traffic flow problems and trash behind? I don't know if it's South County or the trash.
Going, I, I just want to say, when this is over, you and I, we're here, we'll, we'll address your problems. Come on, you can see that, that's not the case, you're gonna be the first person I talk to. All right, I get taken, I get took to federal court, county police did, over the beggars. Uh, I took down one, anybody in any intersection, gang handling against county ordinance. And, you know, we have, uh, right summons and then left law, we don't need to arrest them, but we need to summon them. And we didn't have any gang handles, did we? And then lost a federal lawsuit, and that's why there's gang handles everywhere. So this is now in the court of the county council, the county council. So they have to, basically the federal government said that your law is unconstitutional. So that's why, um, they're all there in the spring. I don't know his name, but, uh, he basically wants to lose them in the technicals. So that's why we're dealing with the gang handling situation. And really, there's nothing more that I can do until there is a law that is created. So where I can then take action upon it. And while I still have the mic, I want to say, yes, we are experiencing, like, uh, I don't like to say crime wave, we are experiencing a crime wave in two select categories. If this wasn't going on right now, my crime is way down. People aren't being shot, people aren't, you know, like burglaries are way down. You walk home from work in your car, like your house is broken down. Unfortunately, it's when you walk out of your house and you butt your car, it's broken down. That is going on over the entire metropolitan area. There is task force with over a hundred people that have been working on these things. Catalytic converter thefts completely out of control, which the federal government can't involve. Because I do not have the ability to go out to Kentucky or over to Indiana or some of these other venues that are giving the money to these things. That are cashing the check, so. I want to make sure that everybody realizes that I'm experiencing, we as a community here are experiencing these car break-ins and these car thefts. But it is these two areas that are driving my statistical numbers. I, every week, I have to explain myself to the chief, every single week. Now, he seems like very professional, that's not a fan. But I can tell you that my immediate boss wants to know. And when I say, I can't get SRU down here between one AM and five AM because of this. And he says, I will make a phone call and twenty minutes later, I will get him to that time. It's just like anything else in life. So we are doing everything we can. Fourth precinct is not short, it's not like I'm trying to go out and gang handle for men to come in and work. I have eleven people that are working. And then fortunately for me, a huge majority of police officers live inside the fourth precinct. Of course, our program has that, there are policemen everywhere, there are retired policemen everywhere. And if you think for one second that those conversations don't go very well, they all have my phone number, they know how to reach me. And there are a few of them here today. So I'm getting it from all angles with this car break-in. So there's not anything that I'm not asking for. So, uh, yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier, uh, you have other controls tonight, but then the chief brought you a large army?
Yeah, so what it affected is that.
Could you define large army?
Yeah, all right, so what it affected is I got an SRU unit, which is uniformed and ununiformed guys. And then I got the, um, the auto theft thing, the auto theft that came down in unmarked cars and plainclothes. And then I got a group that I don't even want to define. I, I, I don't know how much we've talked about it, because it's the first time ever I've ever utilized them. But it was a group that looked, you know, uh, I would probably say seven, that come down and they identify people that are in stolen cars. And they have the train with the capacity in those cars to take individuals in possession. Um, it's, I mean, you know, so twenty, sometimes ten, sometimes, it just all depend on, you know, these, these individuals are fighting a crime throughout the entire county. So while I'm experiencing this problem, the northern's experiencing shootings. And so the bosses have to, you know, keep everything in perspective, so. And if you have any, I, 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 there's not a time limit on me, we're gonna be here. So if you have a question for me, I will be here to, with my people to deal with anything that you.
So this is the part where I think that I have at least gotten an answer to all the questions that have been submitted. But this is the opportunity for you guys to correct me and tell me how wrong I actually am. So this has got to be open question and answer session. So I'll start him, so we'll go to her. Uh, state your questions to the floor and we'll go to her.
It's for the audience. If you don't like where the prop fee money is going, talk to your, your county representative. I only see ten this year. Who else is here from the county council? If you don't like where the prop fee money is going, write a letter to Sam Page. They're in charge of the budget. This is a county issue, not a state issue for prop fee. They determine who gets the money. It's not defund the police, it's defend the police. If you have more police. If you have more police, you're gonna have less crime. These people are operating with less personnel for more crime in our area. We don't want to be the serious crimes with, with the guns. We want to have no crime like it was before. And it's talk about prop fee with your local representative, because they are in charge of who gets the money in the county. Prop fee was meant for the police.
We have one, two, three, there were a bunch of others. Sorry, so we're here, here, the back.
Um, why does British City get so much of all these offices, when they're a very successful organization? Why can they not have a lot of, of police officers who live in this city? It's concerning how we afford our officers, go out there and do a lot of work. Why can they not have a lot of, of police officers who live in this city? When I read this, I don't have a high expectation of where, um, I don't see a target. But just need, what makes you watch me? Because we have a rule about our community that goes, um, be careful of talent to, um, the justice department. And I don't think that's fair.
Could you please repeat the question?
They feel the exact opposite. They say they pay a lot more to the community than, you know, they're no different than Maryland, I agree. There's a dedicated officer down there, there's a casino, and then there's a hotel, and then there's a parking lot. So, you know, you don't tell anybody, maybe rich, you know, pay here, and they, we just, you know, it's the same thing we do with the mall. You know, the mall has plenty of, you know, the twenty stores and everything else, but, um, people are victimized there, you know, through shoplifting in the, in the, or the cars, the parking lot. And we provide a police officer there to control that business core board, because that's basically where seventy percent of my crime comes from, is that laboring, they made area up there. So, um, we don't give them anything. You know, we, that was all arranged before I was ever a police captain in South County.
I can understand that, because you were not the number to compare. How many you and I, how many more come here that we have eleven? So that's my point is, how many more do you have to compare?
Well, you, you, you can't compare the two areas. Uh, you know, there's, there's more radio traffic calls for service. And there's more calls for service that are priority one, that take more than, you know, two officers to work sometimes. I, I don't, I think that's what they're trying to do is, like, they should have, they have twenty, we should have twenty, you know, they, and that's it.
It's just a lot.
They give me eleven and we work, you know. We're not understanding, we don't like, don't love that, we work, we're dealing with our, our, we're just eleven.
You know, county council.
Repeat the question.
Okay, you want to, that's a good question, a question. Uh, the prop fee money, how they would get that, who diverted it, and how do we get it back?
Pay attention. When you pay attention to what you vote for, you get results that you expect. Prop fee was put on the ballot. I personally voted against it, not because I don't want to restaff my money, I did. I just didn't believe with the language that was on that ballot that they'd get it. And it didn't. Why didn't it? Because it was vague, it said public safety, save publics. Now, the ads that went up on TV said, oh, we're gonna get the police out there. But once it, it actually got heard, I mean, in one of the municipalities, the county said, well, public safety means I can fix my roads. The county council said, oh, we can pay our staff, because that's public safety. You know, but there was no outrage. And who'd have shown that people that we thought we were voting for would get?
And who'd have shown that people that we thought we were voting for would get those, those funds? So when county council is up for election, or you got a county executive up for election, you gotta hold a feint to the firing, saying, "Look, this is what we intended, this is what we're doing." You know, I certainly know that I, I'm up for election every two years. And I, you know, I see the posts on Facebook, there's some people who don't like it, aren't they? But there's some people who love it. My wife. Maybe they have something. But, you know, we're held accountable. And if you're not doing your job, or maybe you're not doing what you said you would do when you, you rougher election, then you, you don't deserve it either. And that's, but we, we have to have people like you that come out and pay attention. What happened with prop fee is, is shameful. But the people that can change that, the people that are on this county, you need to pay attention to them. Because they didn't do what you thought you were voting for. And there's very little, you know, state level, every time we try to do anything to bring in local government, you're local control, local control. You know, I, I did the bill that bring in, uh, the health departments, made the, uh, give the council right to oversee that. People think that's terrible. But, you know, elected officials are elected to protect your liberties, to protect your, your well-being. And they, they're the people that you elected to do that. So they're the people that they're not doing it, that you need to hold them accountable. So we, we, we didn't complain about prop fee, but we didn't pay attention to what it was. We didn't make them define that.
What's the percent that we lost because of that?
I don't know exactly, but it was, it was substantial.
But Stan, could you, could be?
Could be, could be.
I just wanted to know what we can do for support about vaginas, since you had brought up that it was something to do with the way a law was written? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, the answer was, what can we do? Uh, about the vaginas, part of the problems was that that law was found to be unconstitutional, as I understand it. Because the court said, "Well, the way the, the vacancy law ordinance said is you can get revenge and stand in the middle of the street like six times a year." And they said, "Well, what about eight? What about 10?" You know, it looks to us that you're not trying to, to have a law that protects public safety. It looks like you're having a law that goes after these individuals, offensive, offensive to their liberties. So this, this law is unconstitutional, they threw it out. There are other laws that can be passed, or certainly reasonable. I certainly would like to, I'd like to see something that says they can't stand for traffic land, they can't stand in the middle of the road because it's a traffic hazard. And I think something like that would stand up. Uh, I understand, uh, Reverend, uh, Councilman Trigg has had something written up, but he's never, ever presented it to the council. I don't know the details on it. Uh, I don't know what we can do at the state level, I'm looking at it now. Again, it's, it's really hard at the state level to deal with those local issues. But we will take a look at it, uh, from next session.
So let, um, um, we get a second next.
Uh, good afternoon, there's, uh, most of this conversation has been how you guys helped us. Is there any thought or any consideration into, uh, having perhaps neighborhood watches? Uh, so, so myself and a couple of folks, uh, we've done some work to organize a couple of neighborhood HOAs together. But is, is there any thought of potentially, uh, maybe getting groups together? Uh, with the ultimate goal of arranging a date between person within our neighborhood? So, so the thought is, if a person goes to neighborhood one, chances are, they're able to go to neighborhood two. And if there was a, if there was a kind of a medium, like a group meeting or something like that, where if the person's in neighborhood one, be alert, people who are idols, people who are early writers, they tend to chase the neighborhoods. Uh, with the ultimate goal of arranging a date between the person, the person within the neighborhood.
I, I know exactly what you're saying. Uh, those guys are there to live the neighborhood watch. We do a lot of stuff with, uh, neighborhood watch on Facebook, we've got all, I mean, there are, there are so many different things that we do that are involving neighborhoods. So what we do is we tell them, just come over and see if we're already doing what it is that you're wanting. And we can just be in contact with somebody else that's already doing it. Or if we're not doing it, we can do it with you. Because, like, we can, we can see our vision going off of that. You know, all kinds of different things that we're doing, so.
Yeah, the thing is, is we're married in great length, random.
Right.
After breaks, we're gonna get more than us.
And then we're already wired in with somebody that's, that's doing that.
Yeah, the thing is that the, the other HOAs are not getting fixed up on a day.
That's what I mean, like, when we come in contact with people like you, we put them onto what it is that we're doing. So it's like, sometimes in a lot of these groups, we don't even know who they are. They, they don't contact us, or, um, you know, they just want to follow more websites or, you know, or different, um, interests. I, I just want to clarify, are you asking, is there some way to ordinate this with your boss? Can, can you put together maybe the homeowner association leaders that would ordinate this?
No, it exists, and I think you and I can see it, but I don't think we understand it.
Well, I, I guess what he doesn't understand is, if it already exists.
It exists with video, too.
How, how, how do you plug it in? Because obviously, they don't know it exists.
Yeah, so how, how?
Is that what, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I organize with, uh, another question here, we organize nine, 10 different HOAs in South County. And I specifically, in the Christopher Club right there. Me, I have literally reached out to the, uh, South County precinct Facebook page. And I've asked, "Hey, I'm, I have a neighborhood watch there, can you guys send in resources for me?" And I, I got them, it's like dollars.
Could we arrange for a meeting with these people by any means?
Because the goal is, we want to cross-sink information to you.
Right.
And, and if you've got, if you've got 20 members, not us engaging, but you've got 20 hours of massive intel, you guys, you guys are gonna direct the block directly without us participating in the entire campaign.
I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying, and I think you're actually the exact same thing. Because I access the very school person that needs to, for okay. Does that make any sense?
Yes, we should have, I, we, we have information too. Uh, we have four rounds, it's like I said, doorbell, and you register doorbells, ring doorbell, ring doorbells. We have access to people being contacted and being in case of need.
I want to get registered.
Sorry.
I want to get registered. Like, we don't have a ring video for well, or even some other one, can you register there? Like, I don't know, I don't believe you guys have access to ID or how, but I would want to.
Well, you can hook that to our, through headquarters, you just called, um...
I'll tell you what, I'll talk to my...
The precinct, we may can tell you how to prepare, um, you know, ring doorbells, and we can have that touchy there. Um, it's not like what you're talking about, I don't hope it's just a, um, different, uh, neighborhood police, sharing, getting together, sharing information so that, you know, happens in your neighborhood, you can get together, and share that information, and they, they can support you. So if you, you know what's going on in yours, might be the same thing happening in another, in another neighborhood, so. I hope that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and the thing is, the ring cameras are, are passive, we're talking about pilot thing that's happening. How can we pass, how can we let the neighborhood know? And the thought is perhaps a cookie or something, or a source of, like, how? But, but the ring cameras are, are, are not gonna be as even as the ring cameras are. And I'm all for it, the ring cameras are already, after, as a person of a forensic perspective. We are talking about wild, wild, you know, adversary operations going on. You want to be able to direct resources to learn that, and also alert adjacent neighborhoods what is happening, right? There is not, that, 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 that's not correct anymore.
Um, yeah, I got ring cameras on Saturday, in the case of all the time, I would think, what's going on in the neighborhood. Obviously, I can, maybe I can play back, coordinate and see what's going on. I wouldn't necessarily, they would test something to someone in the act, and they don't go for it.
It was a lot, everyone also had time to take notes. I appreciate that question. Uh, what can, what can you do? Uh, and so first, uh, I want to make, make sure I got a plug for the many members of our office. Please don't forget the prosecutor's role in law enforcement. These guys, it's a son of a police officer, I know these guys have the toughest job in the world. That said, when you get that convention, we got our party at home, working with them. And we're getting some more officers bringing in more cases, which I think we all agree is a good thing. That's more cases that our office has to prosecute. And right now, we're one of the most underfunded prosecutors' offices in the nation, a similarly sized prosecutor's office. You can look at places like Milwaukee City, which has a little, Milwaukee County, which has a little bit less population. And your crime rate is slightly lower, and their office is probably twice as big as ours. Look at Baltimore, twice as big as ours. Our, our prosecutor to case ratio, if you look at just the pure numbers, is about 1. One prosecutor learned 290 or so cases. That works out somewhere between 250 on the low end, 200 cases on the case, in terms of case load, which is a lot. Now that said, we're getting it done, and we're gonna continue to get it done. If we're serious about public safety, I'm just, I'm just saying, please don't forget about, uh, um, our, our office. Also, it must keep in mind too, as Zinnu's county has been transitioning way before many of us from suburban to more urban county. Well, that's brought some of the, some of the problems of, of urban community, and that's raw, higher crime rates. Uh, and so, um, I cannot agree with you more. And I think the crux of what you're saying is, is that with our neighborhood watches, just more of a partnership. So where we are, um, working with each other in real time, and I think the ring cameras, I think that's great, and having that connection, but also these kind of conversations. And so one thing, a couple of things that we did is, we started, we saw a spike in domestic violence. And we seen that spike across the country, especially during the pandemic, people are home and, 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 and all the things that go with that. So we created a domestic violence advisory committee. So we've been meeting with members of the domestic violence council monthly to make certain that not only are we telling whether we consider best practices, but making certain that we're talking to experts, to make sure we're, you know, we're doing what we should be doing to help these victims. What I would say is, if we can get, um, and I figured we're, we're going down, you know what vigilante is? But neighborhood watch program, we get several neighborhood watch programs. I'm convinced we'll watch, uh, a watch, a neighborhood watch advisory committee. And we can meet regularly with law enforcement, and we can sit down and make certain that we know what's the latest going on in your particular community. You have, you'll have a place where you can call directly and email directly, where you can say, "Hey, this is an issue that we're seeing, and we want to make sure that you know it in real time." And I'll commit to that. So if we can, uh, my assistant is over there, he can get your contact information, then you contact some of the neighborhood watches around the, around the county, and that way also the ones who aren't, don't have, aren't as functioning as others, maybe we can help get resources to get them going. Because you all are always gonna be frontline of defense. On, most people don't come, they thrive around these guys, right? They're gonna wave, so they're not around. So you all see stuff more so, when you see someone looking, and I saw this, I was a kid, I saw a guy looking in cars, I was mean. I didn't know that was true. And then later on, my dad's car was broken into, so I made that connection, okay? He was looking at what guards were wanting to break into. So people in the neighborhoods, you know oftentimes, for us, what's going on, who we need to, who we need to look at. And I think that's another way that we can just start sharing information and intel. And the last thing I'll say on that, is you all are familiar with victim impact statements? Those are statements that victims get to make at sentencing when someone's convicted, to say, "Judge, this is how it's impacted me." And the judge takes that into consideration in their final, in their final, uh, in their sentencing. What happens is that in homicides and serious crimes, the victims will come forward and give their impact. But what happened, like, what we see with car thefts and things of that nature, once the, once the person who's been victimized sees that the person's prosecuting, like, you, because I did the same thing, but my car was broken into. We just kind of like, okay, for good, maybe she did your job, and prosecutors, everybody did their job, thank you. They don't show up. And so the judge is, all they see is, well, I got this person in front of me, maybe convicted, but, I mean, I'm just gonna go with what I, what I, what I got, and I don't have a good to hear, and, and, and there it is. But what, and that was said, if, if it means that much to show up at that victim impact statement, tell the judge how it's impacted you, because then they're just not hearing it for much. They think we're just, they think we're just talking, "Oh, well, you're always gonna see that for, for victims." And that's true. But when we have the victim, the person who's victimized is there, it gives a much more of an impact. And that's something that I would ask you to share, you may not miss part of that case, to calm down after that sentencing, if you feel comfortable. And I, I understand in some cases you may not, but if you can please calm down, and you don't even have to show up, you can write a statement, and we'll read it for you if you don't feel comfortable. So those are just the two things that I would, I would say, and I, and I appreciate the question.
Sorry, I have one here, and then here, and then we gotta wrap up. Everybody's been a little around afterwards, around the beginning of this. So the, the question is simple, first, how are they finding the items? Where do they get them? Where do they sell them? And then if you happen to stumble upon these groups, what do you do?
Well, I think, um, it's not the same. I think that you should probably run into your house a couple of days. Well, the one thing that they're, they're doing a couple of different things, but they're doing, it's the path of least resistance. They're, they're not wanting to make any noise or draw any attention to themselves when they're in the submissions, which is evident on the record up here, it's, right? It's almost like you follow them around in the middle of the night, and it's very, it's very tactical, and it's very stealth, okay? Um, although, when you create, when a citizen creates a better opportunity, they'll take another step forward, which is even doorbell, I'm sorry, the driver's alarm in the car. Those votes were then burned around. Now, I, I, I understand, if you're driving your car and you just don't stop. I, I don't, I... How many years ago was that?
This year.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about. Uh, there's, there's a couple of different instances. If you go, if you, I, I mean, I'm a, you know, I'm a policeman, I consider myself pretty handy, um, when I open my... This is my advice. If you're confronted in your driveway, I always look everywhere before I open my garage. If you don't, chances are, create a percentage of the chance where you're gonna be bad to that person. Okay, if you're on the street, in the car, and there's other guys, and, you know, I, I don't know how to, tell you how to handle that, other than don't get out of your car and don't stop.
Are you, would you like to, so, maybe we should, they're firing, or they have to?
Well, we had a gentleman that had that same thing that you're saying. He came out with a gun in his hand, and he engaged three men in a gunfight, died, eliminated over nothing, a car. And as he said, they shot first, and I, I, when I was told, I was not sure they did. Do you want to do something like that? No. No. None of our lives are worth property. As far as fencing, you don't have to fence change, you don't have to fence a gun, you don't have to fence your credit. No, these people are getting caught because they've got credit cards in your pocket, in their pockets, from which they stole from your wallets and your purses that you've left in your cars. That's the reason it continues to go, and go, and go, and get worse, and worse, and worse, because they are making a lot of money doing it. There's no, there's no cars, or fence, or stuff like that.
We're here for us right now. Wait a second.
Here, how, come on, come on. Come on, Spidey, go ahead. Yeah. This gentleman here, I'm, what you're about, I'm in the community, the Guard Bell Mayor is in my area, I live in Nats, okay? The Guard Bell Mayor on their website, and there's the, Captain Community, I'm sure it's one down south here. I'm going to be there next year, go. Did you hear they had gunshots the other day? And I said, 600 people know about it, computer calling it, you know, it's like, there is really tape going on these computers. And the other part is, anybody here that's TP AAA? Mr. Murphy? He's a, he's a member? I'm a, I'm a member. What we do is TP AAA, you get a card, which you go, which go to class. There's six classes, and seven classes you go to. Robust, you know, Dr. Justice Field, uh, Guard Bell Division, dump out, and show you slides on, they say. I'm not beside it. The sniper division, what else? How about that?
So what, what he's talking about is, I think it goes back to the question of some of the.
Come on up here. Can you use a mic?
Yeah, sure. So I think it was going back to the, it's kind of gone back to the neighborhood watch question. So we do have a lot of neighborhood watches that we, that we communicate with myself and two of my officers here. We go to numerous subdivisions that have set up neighborhood watches within their meetings and start a chain of communication with them. We give them crime updates, hey, this is what's going on in their neighborhoods, and then they have a neighborhood watch captain, and they can communicate directly with us. So those are out there, but I think what he's saying is a really good idea, is that maybe we can get, we can get some of these neighborhood watches together in one, together as one. Whereas, if you go to Oakville, there is, I patrolled Oakville in 1999 through 2001, and I grew up in a country on a farm. So it's very strange for me to see how many subdivision streets there are. So as a patrolman that patrolled Oakville, and I, all I did was drive down every street in Oakville, every subdivision street, I couldn't complete that in the end of the ship. That's how many streets there are, that's how many neighborhoods you have in Oakville. So there are a whole lot of neighborhood watches within the community of Oakville, but they're not all joined together, whereas some, you know, like Beatrice subdivision, or maybe across the street on Becker, they're communicating, but maybe we can do a better job. And what he's talking about is, have the neighborhood watches kind of joined together, and doing like a Big South End meeting as close to individual ones like we do. We haven't done as many in the last year because of COVID, we've done some over Zoom and things like that, but that's difficult to do. So we are going to try, and I think that's a great idea, and I will work on that to get it more organized, where we can have maybe five or six neighborhood watches that are working independently, and then we go to their meetings, maybe we can bring them all together. One of the things we have at our police station is what we call a community group, we can hold about 50 to 75 people, and it's free of charge, you can come in and have a neighborhood meeting. We have quite a few neighborhood trustee meetings that come in and hold their meetings there, and then we will present to them, hey, this is the crime that's going on in your neighborhood at this time. So we can, we always have that to offer. What he was talking about is what we have the Citizens Police Academy, we just finished back in South County, we had about 40 members who showed up that this year in six weeks. We basically pulled the veil back on the police department and bringing all the different units to show the citizens what we do, introduce them to the people in their different units. We talk about all the different crimes, what all of our different organizations do. We have the K-9 unit group in, we have all these different things coming to talk. And then in the end, there's an opportunity for you to join what's called the Citizens Police Academy, the LUNAI Association. Right now in South County, we have the biggest group of that, it's about 140 members, all throughout South County and Afton. We have quarterly meetings where we meet with them, they come and help us do events. I have my Special Limits t-shirt on here, we're a massive sponsor of Special Limits, we'll have citizens for the Citizens Police Academy, the LUNAI Association, come with us, and do the different volunteer organization things that we do. So that's just another one there that he was talking about. And we will be doing that again, probably two classes next year, and we will update that on our Facebook page and our websites. So if that answers those questions.
Thank you. Last question for Forrest, who wants, Forrest wants the mic. He's Houston.
Well, I've heard a lot of the comments, and I've heard a lot of the questions. Some of the questions, tying on a loop to maybe the police can do a better job. I'd just like to say this to you, I remember listening down here for 42 years, and we had had problems. About four years ago, there was crime in all of our parking lots, we had lots of that going on. And we formed a police, police community relationship between third precinct and the fourth precinct. The business people got together, and we had monthly meetings, and every one of these people had come to our meeting, everyone of them, and they listened, and they did things done, and they helped us. I have Captain Schneider's phone number, personal phone number, I'm like, oh. I've got guys, Captain of the third, third precinct, this phone number, I'm like, oh. These people want to help us, but we need to help them, too. Tell you something about our Police Businessmen Association, you should also, we raise money for police officers. We gave away six scholarships for policemen's children at our last banquet, plus we were there to honor them. We also did other things for the police. Everybody, PUP, the next guy, all policemen, and the fourth and the third precinct. So we're back there trying to help push this law, to be able to communicate with the police and the state officials. So it's not up to you, it was up to us, sometimes, we did our time, we know them all, they help us, they're there, so I'm, thank you all. Thank Chief for being here, and thanks to Murphy and O'Donnell. So thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I certainly would like to thank Prosecutor Bell for coming, Chief, and certainly my colleague, Michael O'Donnell. We work for you. You know, we put this on to give you a voice. I, I don't know what else we can do for you. We're always open, my cards, Michael's information, Wesley's open to you, really pleased to hear your ordination, that we can put together with the, you know, neighborhood groups. If you have any questions, or any concerns, or any ideas. And as we started this out with, with a new law that's going to help our unborn, our newborn babies to rescue, that came from, from citizens. I represent you, so your ideas are important to me, and important to Representative O'Donnell as well. You know, as long as we're communicating with each other, good things will happen. Stop yelling at each other. Stop vitriol, politics in the line of behavior. Turn off TV's, don't hate your neighbors. Help each other, that's how we're going to get this done. We're going to try to do more of these, you know, we've got like four now, Prosecutor Bell's, two of them, Forrest. There are a few that is a subject we think is important in this community, if we need to have a group meeting on it, let me know, we'll schedule a meeting together. Michael, would you like to say?
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.